Evening, afternoon session here. It's the Sir David Garrard Special Session on International Counterterrorism Policing. What makes this international is that we've got three different countries on this panel, including a couple of great Brits, okay? On this panel, we have a great, by the way, British delegation here this year. I know that Sir David is watching us right now from London together with Ava. We know you wanted to be here with us today at this conference, but you can be sure that the people on your panel will do a great job and you'll be very happy with what you hear. So a big hug and a kiss, Sir David and Ava. It is now my honour to welcome to the dais DAC Lawrence Taylor, Deputy Assistant Commissioner of the Metropolitan Police of the United Kingdom. We've had many representatives here of the Metropolitan Police and we love them dearly and we thank you for everything you do every day. Deputy Assistant Commissioner Lawrence Taylor began his career with the Sussex Police, where he was a specialist firearms officer and tactical commander, as well as Assistant Chief Constable. At the Metropolitan Police, he held key roles in operations and frontline policing and was the gold commander for during the Brexit and Black Lives Matter protests. He holds the gold public order, the gold CBRN commander, as well as the leadership positions on several national police committees. He's now the Deputy Assistant Commissioner of the Met Police, and I'm told he knows how to fire a firearm very accurately. The floor is now yours.
Hopefully that's working okay. So I'm going to give a bit of a background around the threat that we're facing in the UK, some of the challenges we're seeing in the UK, and why there's some real problems for us and how we might need to think slightly differently about how we approach some of these challenges. So first, just a little bit about me. So I'm probably one of the luckiest police officers in the United Kingdom in that I've got one of the best jobs in policing. So half my role is protective security in London. So I look after the royal family, our ministers, our embassies, Heathrow City Airport, protective security operations across London, all the royal households in the country. And the other half of my job, I'm the Senior National Coordinator for Protect and Prepare, which is the first two Ps of our counterterrorism strategy, the contest strategy. And that sees me being responsible for testing and exercising the UK response to our terrorist threat, protective security postures across the UK, as well as working with our counterterrorism armed policing teams, our CBRN teams, and of course, very closely with our Prevent and Pursue colleagues in the investigative space and UK intelligence agencies. And it's because of those responsibilities that it genuinely is a huge privilege to be here today to talk about how we work as a team and as a player in that international team, how important it is, the relationships that we all hold, and how we engage and tackle some of these challenges together. So we are seeing a real change in the threat landscape across the UK. And we're seeing that against a backdrop as our Home Secretary made clear earlier this summer, a rising terrorist threat across the country. And one of the challenges we've got, thankfully, over the last two years, we've seen a very small number, if any, last year, have successfully initiated terrorist attacks in the UK. But of course, we only need to go back to 2017, where we had some horrendous attacks, the Manchester Arena bombing, killing children and many others, the marauding terrorist attacks in London, including where we lost one of our colleagues, Keith Palmer, at the Palace of Westminster. And these horrific attacks, the loss of life they cause, as well as the impact on public confidence for people to go about their lives in the normal way, are the things that we are striving to deal with every day. But of course, should the worst happen, and it's often impossible to stop everything, we need to make sure that we can minimise that damage and mitigate that impact. And since 2017, we've worked really hard as a network to change our approach to how we tackle the terrorist threat in the country. We want our public to enjoy the freedoms that are the bedrock of our democratic society. We want them to be informed and we want them to be part of the solution to the challenges we face. But we know that terrorist plots and attacks continue across the UK and across the world. The successful operations against Daesh, their so-called caliphate in Syria, have undoubtedly reduced their ability to commit and operate on UK soil. But we are seeing an evolved threat through organised criminality, through organised terrorist groups, and individuals who are being radicalised, sometimes without direct contact, who are accessing their information online. And whilst we've redoubled our efforts to tackle terrorism and the threat that it poses, it still has a significant concern, a significant impact on our country. And those of you who have seen the UK media recently, you'll have seen, we've just had a four or five day extensive manhunt for one of our terrorist prisoners who somehow managed to get out of prison, holding on to the bottom of a van. It's things like that that put terrorism back into the minds of our public. On this occasion, the question being, how on earth did this person get out of prison and how was that allowed? But actually, we were very open in our response, very transparent, and as you'll have seen, we successfully identified, located him and arrested him on Sunday morning. But it's all of this that keeps that narrative around trust and confidence within our communities that is a really important part of the work we do. So our challenge is both to do everything we can to keep terrorism off the front pages, but also support the resilience of the public and our private sector, so that we work with them, so that we're prepared, so they're vigilant, they're confident to report concerns and understand how they can improve their security in their workplace to reduce any risk, and in the worst cases, what to do to keep themselves safe and others in the event of an attack. We use the cliche to be alert but not be alarmed. And it's right, of course, but that is a really challenging balance to find. Transparency versus some of the places in which we operate, how do we do that, reassuring the public that we have got their backs and that we are doing everything we can? And the reality is, since 2017, we have disrupted 39 late-stage terror plots in the UK with our partners in the UK intelligence community. And that just goes to show that enduring threat that exists in the UK. And those threats have included the targeting of public figures, such as MPs, specific communities and events, such as the Pride celebrations in our LGBTQ communities, and targeting of public locations for indiscriminate attacks determined to cause as much horror as possible. In each case, we've arrested and we've brought those people to justice and they have good, lengthy sentences. But we are now starting to see people coming out of prison, and that's come up in one of the talks earlier, and that is becoming an increasing demand, an increasing challenge for us in CT policing. And as a nation, and I think it will resonate with some of you as well, the threats that we are facing are diversifying. They're deepening in complexity and they're changing the direction we work. So the threat in the UK remains predominantly from Islamic terrorism, but we've also seen a continued rise in the extreme right-wing threat, and they're changing the direction of our work, and I'll talk about our state threats in a moment. Islamist threats can be indiscriminate, targeting those public locations, and while many indeed most express hatred and hatred towards communities and groups, the extreme right wing specifically focus on our racial minorities, our LGBTQ communities, and sadly, antisemitism is a key theme throughout. And at the moment, our key concern still remains from that self-initiated, radicalised individual online. And perhaps really worrying is the volume of young people that we are now starting to see in our workload. They're submerged in those online worlds, they're influenced by the toxic, violent, extreme content they're consuming, and they're increasingly moving to violent acts. And of course, by the very nature of that activity, these people are harder to spot and they're harder to stop. But we're also seeing some of our more familiar threats. We're seeing flickers of activity overseas from groups that we can't fully consign to history. And we're managing those threats, as I say, from those people being released from prison, alongside some increasing demands from state threats and war crimes that is making our three missions challenging. Now, I touched on young people, and Colonel Miri Isin referred to this earlier this morning when she talked about the terror vibe. And this really resonated with me because we are seeing a significant rise, we think largely linked to Covid and a number of young people, very many young people, being pushed online and into that space. But our young people are your young people. They move effortlessly online, they're being exposed to, or in the case of some, they are posting and seeking out extreme content. And as I say, we're seeing record numbers of under 18s being arrested for terrorism offences. And as a police officer, clearly that's unsettling. As a parent, I find it horrifying. And we're arresting for the full spectrum of offences. So at the sharp end, we've seen people like Daniel Harris, who was an 18-year-old convicted of creating terrorist content which inspired violent acts overseas, which was the Buffalo shooting in Texas. He did that from his bedroom in a small town in England, and rightly convicted. We've seen a 15-year-old boy arrested for running an online forum for an extreme right-wing threat group promoting race wars and providing information on how to carry out an attack. And the list continues. And of course, members of those groups have no idea how young some of these children are, and they are children, and they're quite shocked when they find out. And clearly, we need to take proactive, positive action. We can't just sit back and let this happen. But we also need further discussion around different tactics to stop young people coming into and becoming involved in terrorism. So what is the right approach to take with young people in our society, who are more and more living their lives online, engage online and believe everything they see online? I have it with my children, regularly, arguments over the dinner table where they tell me some nonsense they've just seen on TikTok but absolutely believe it's true, because why wouldn't they? So what safeguards have we got in place? Who do we influence? How can government become more involved in influencing the social media space? And critically, what can our partners and what can our families do? And I'll come back to some of this in a short while. So alongside those traditional threats, I also talked about state threats. And we are seeing an enormous growth in our state threat demand, and it's been touched on throughout the conference in the last day or so. Our war crime investigations continue to grow, and clearly, there is a limit to what I can talk about in this space. But it's going to be no surprise to you that that state threat has become more than 50% of our mission from a few years ago, perhaps being just 10% of our workload. In the UK, of course, we've had a very high-profile attack on our soil in 2018 in Salisbury, when Russia used prohibited chemical weapons to attack people in the UK. And Russia's illegal invasion of Ukraine has of course exacerbated the risk and their behaviour further. And in November 2022 last year, our MI5 Director General, Ken McCallum, noted there'd been 10 Threat to Life operations conducted by Iran in the UK. And by 2023 this year, we now believe that number to stand at 15. Very targeted, very sophisticated plans to attack individuals living in the UK. And the pace and intensity of that threat continues. And it was due to the threat posed by Iran that the broadcaster, Iran International, temporarily stopped broadcasting from the UK. Now, we strongly believe in the UK of the universal right of freedom of speech and expression and to speak truth to tyrants and authoritarian regimes. So my team and I are working very closely with Iran International to resume operations from the UK and protect those from what is an ongoing threat to individuals operating out of that establishment. And we know it's getting noticed. So myself and Axo Matjukz have both appeared on an Iranian sanctions list earlier on this year. So they are aware of our activity and it's clearly having an impact. And of course, this increase in state-driven threat sits alongside the continuing and developing terrorist threat. And we've got to be clear that this is not a sum zero game. We have to address both, and this is where our challenge comes. As demand goes up, the other doesn't go away. We have to do it at the moment with the same level of resource, and that creates risk across the board. It adds complexity to our threat management and it requires us to widen and deepen our partnerships both across government and security partners, but critically with our public and with partners in the private sector, so that we can address these different threats which converge in attacking our way of life. And we continue to rely on our international partnerships to address the terrorist threat and the state threat, whether physically, economically, or through use of disinformation to challenge our democracies and institutions. And our international partnerships and ability to share information with our closest allies undoubtedly saves lives. And our coordinated action against a shared threat, whether that's from the coalition against Daesh, to the combined efforts of the international community to identify and expel Russian intelligence officers throughout the Western world, have inhibited their ability to operate. And we've proven time and time again that when our community of partners stands strongly together, we truly can make our country safer. And of course, alongside this changing nature of threat is technology, and it's changing perhaps faster than any time in history, and you will all be acutely aware of this. We're harnessing data from ever widening ranges of sources, but we don't want to be the ones to stop that advancement, we want to be part of that journey, because they have huge benefits for society. Artificial intelligence is perhaps one of the biggest opportunities of all. So we, as an intelligence, as a counterterrorism community, need to be at the forefront of that delivery, so that we think about ways of mitigating right from the start, rather than trying to retrospectively put mitigation in place once it's developed and once it's become very, very challenging. And that requires strong and far-sighted international action. Drones. So I'm the national lead for the police use of drones in the UK. They're far more able to be accessed, they're far more agile. You know, in policing, certainly, we are using them more and more and more. But we've seen challenges with counterdrone, you're going to hear from Andy in a moment, around some of the work that we're doing in the UK to do that, because their threat continues. We see daily in the Ukraine their use as a battlefield weapon, it's now firmly integrated into military doctrine, and our continued partnership across allied countries to share experience and understanding, work with manufacturers and users of drones is vital towards maintaining our security. I'm going to wish through my last bit very quickly. So I've talked about the diversification of threat, I've talked about the challenge we've got with discovering, deterring and diminishing that threat. Our counterterrorism partnerships are essential, but we know with the best will in the world, we can't do everything. So working with our public, working with our partners, who are in challenging times, both financially and in terms of the level of responsibility they see, is going to be really important. So to support this in the UK, the government are committed to introducing legislation to require large public venues to undertake consideration of counterterrorism requirements and ensure they're implemented. And at the end of this year, Martin's Law, which is named in honour of Martin Het, a victim of the Manchester Arena bombing in 2017, and whose mother has been a tireless campaigner, will be brought to Parliament and legislated. And that was a clear recommendation out of the Manchester Arena Inquiry, where it talks about our engagement and partnership with the arena. Now, under its provisions, public locations will have statutory responsibilities to put measures in place, both in terms of preparing for attacks and what to do should they happen. And we're in the final stages of confirming that legislation. And to do that, Counterterrorism Policing have developed a website called ProtectUK. I'd urge you to have a look, protectuk.polic.uk, where we will be sharing very transparently information with partners, with public sectors and others, to help them help us tackle the threats that are posed. And I think as an international community, we need to support each other, we need to keep those conversations, we need to be open and transparent with each other, we need to learn from each other. Everybody will do things differently and there are huge benefits in that sharing. So I'm going to stop because I'm running well over time. The threats we face are vast. They're deeper, they're more complex than ever. We are evolving and we're evolving quickly. We've made significant changes since 2017, which means we're stronger, faster and better equipped, and I can say with great confidence that our partners, particularly with UK intelligence, but partners across the world, are closer and far more resilient than in the past. But as reflected, our partnerships are diverse, they're varied, they're innovative, and that is how we keep pace with those who seek to do us harm. Communities defeat terrorism by connecting as a global community events such as this. We can help keep our local communities safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lawrence. You've got your hands full. As Professor Ghanor always says, it takes a network to beat a network. So you have a lot of things, a lot of balls up in the air at the same time, and we thank you for being busy 24 hours a day keeping citizens of the United Kingdom safe. We appreciate that. I would now like to welcome Mr Graham Ellis, National CT Exercise Team, Homeland Security Group, Home Office, United Kingdom, to the dais. Mr Graham served for 37 years in the London Fire Brigade, LFB, where he rose to the rank of Assistant Commissioner in charge of special operations. When you see Ellis, you'll understand why you would want him to come and rescue you in a fire situation. He's a big guy, he can bring the ladder, he can take care of you, okay? And he played a critical role in preparing for the high-threat challenges and coordinated the National Olympic Coordinating Centre at the London Olympics, kept all those athletes safe. Didn't you, Ellis? You did, all right. And as the gold commander of the LFB, he led the response to multiple terror attacks in London. Since 2020, Ellis has led the UK Homeland Security Group's National Counterterrorism Exercise Team. This is not his first time here. He's a veteran of ICT. We thank you for your friendship, and the floor is yours.
Ladies and gentlemen, a very good afternoon to you. Graham Ellis from the Homeland Security Group, National Counterterrorism Exercising Team. Quite short on time this afternoon, I'm going to rattle through this very, very quickly, if I may. I've been in the current role, National CT Exercise Team leading the UK for the past three years. Just before I go any further, I'd just like to say, and that was mentioned at the start of the session, a very big thank you to Sir David Garrard, who last night in here was referred to as the UK Ambassador for the ICT. A very big thank you to Sir David for the invitations for the UK delegates here, I believe he's watching. Also, a very, very big personal thank you to Professor Barz Ghanor, all the team here, Jonathan yourself. And I know it was mentioned yesterday, but having in the past met Shabthai Shavet, who was a very knowledgeable and a very humble man, had the pleasure of meeting him at this conference. For you gentlemen to be organising and delivering this event, having just lost not only a longtime colleague but a close, personal friend, I think we all admire you for what you're achieving. Thank you. Lawrence has alluded to, and other speakers today, about the contest strategy or the counterterrorism strategy within the United Kingdom, and in essence, four sections to that: prevent. Lawrence just alluded to some of that prevent work at the moment, the importance of it, and previous speakers here, Axo at the time, Mr Neil Bissou, gave a very good presentation in years gone by about the importance attached to prevention. So within Home Office, UK Government, within Homeland Security, prevent. Protect, Lawrence also alluded to the new legislation, really important legislation being laid before Parliament this year in the United Kingdom to better protect public spaces post the Manchester Arena attack. Myself, our team work within Prepare, and also there's the Pursue, which, you know, obviously, a lot of that is counterterrorism policing, other agencies. But ourselves, the National Counterterrorism Exercise Team, sit within Prepare in Homeland Security Group. It's really important, I think, that there is nationally agreed emergency services policy and doctrine, and indeed, there is. There are regular working groups with nominated leads for not only counterterrorism policing, but fire and rescue service, ambulance, the wider medical community as well, who meet and discuss and agree national doctrine. So no matter where you are in the United Kingdom, the response should be, the response to terror should be unified, it should be the same. Interoperability, I know it's been mentioned so far at this conference on several occasions, but the importance the UK attaches to interoperability is immense, and that's been learnt through many, many lessons learned over the years from real-life events as well as testing and exercising. Something, and I know a colleague from Germany spoke about it yesterday, something that's really struck me over many, many years, is the importance of buy-in from senior leaders across the emergency services. What we find when we test and exercise around the United Kingdom, all the different cities and regions, where you have senior leaders who, dare I say it, get on well with each other, who work collectively on a daily basis, I would argue that that city, that region is far, far better prepared to respond to acts of terrorism and deliver early and effective consequence management and recovery as well. And that's really good to see, and it's something we like to champion, good, strong, effective, interoperable leadership across the emergency services. Some people would argue, I remember probably 20, 25 years ago, people in counterterrorism policing would argue, well, what's this got to do with the ambulance? What's this got to do with the fire brigade? This is counterterrorism. I think we've all seen so many examples of where it would be foolish to even imagine that any one single emergency service could respond effectively to deal with acts of terror. CBRN, Lawrence alluded earlier to the awful events in Salisbury in the United Kingdom, but other CBRN attacks around the world certainly require a multi-agency response, including effective pre-planning before the event. I was speaking over lunch with some colleagues from the United States, we were talking about smoke-filled environments, deliberate use of fire as attack methodology, Benghazi was mentioned. No single agency can do that alone. And I think very proudly, in the United Kingdom, there's a history of really good interoperable working amongst all the emergency services, not to mention NIOLOs, some of you may have heard of those inter-agency liaison officers embedded within fire and rescue, embedded with ambulances and health. These are security cleared professional officers whose job it is to liaise in fast time ahead of events and during events with colleagues from policing and military. Within our section in Prepare, within Homeland Security Group, we have the Attack Response Policy Team, and it's their job to coordinate the emergency services to ensure that doctrine is up to date, is fit for purpose. It's an ever-evolving challenge with some of the doctrine that's there. There's the maritime group, clearly focused on attacks on vessels or other maritime threats as well. Really importantly, and gaining in importance, I would argue, is the Victims of Terrorism Unit. Something wasn't really there in the past but really, you know, really find themselves quite stretched, and ensuring there is proper support to all victims of terrorism right from the get-go, and that's something that's been built over recent years and something we're very proud of. And then as ourselves, the National Counterterrorism Exercising Team. So in essence, Prepare and ourselves, we have five key aims really, or five key areas. So firstly, it's to ensure that the United Kingdom is prepared, capable, interoperable and resilient to the impact of terror attacks that cannot be prevented. With an aim to ensure that all of the regions, like I say, throughout the United Kingdom have got a standard response and recovery mechanism, not just cities close to where there might be attractive targets to terrorism, for example, London or the other major cities. We try and ensure coverage throughout the entire United Kingdom, and that's very, very important to us as well. Secondly, to deliver a coordinated, multi-agency response, fast and effective and safe to all types of terror attacks. We do a lot of work with our colleagues, emergency services, within the emergency services control rooms, from where the first calls are quite often received. Again, that is about interoperability right from the outset across control rooms. A standardisation of, particularly at tactical and strategic level, command and control arrangements throughout the United Kingdom, no matter where you may land, where the attack may be, that command and control arrangement will be the same and similar doctrine. Going through all of that, I would argue, again, communication is key. Do not learn to dance on the night of the ball. If you know your partners before and you've been to a dance rehearsal, heaven forbid when something terrible happens, you know your dance partners and their response is always better, and I would argue that saves lives in itself as well. Thirdly, within Prepare, to ensure that the United Kingdom has the full range of capabilities to respond to not only current but future threats. We find ourselves on the anniversary of the tragic events of 9/11, and the 9/11 Commission Report, I always remember, stated the greatest failure was one of imagination. So not just about what has happened in the past, looking in the rear-view mirror, looking out the windshield as well, what is coming next, what could the next attack methodology be, and ensuring the emergency services are best prepared for it as well. Fourthly, to minimise the impact of terror attacks on people, services and communities, something that Lawrence alluded to as well, the real importance of engaging with partners from local resilience forums throughout the United Kingdom, to make sure all of those partners who do step up on a bad day to assist the communities are engaged and involved in testing and exercising as well. For ourselves, I think when I came in three years ago, one of the things that had been lacking, if I'm honest, in National Counterterrorism Exercising, there were lots of balaclavas and guns and helicopters, but there was maybe less focus on what happens post-attack recovery, something that Israel does, we know very, very well, rapid recovery to send a reassurance message to communities, and it's something we worked hard on over recent years. We're short of time today, but we do have a colleague in the audience, Alex, who's from the Counterterrorism Preparedness Network. If you get a chance to speak with Alex during the next few days, I would suggest you do so as well, they're doing some amazing work. Finally, fifthly, identify key areas of learning from national exercises and manage change and improvement, not only from exercising but from real-life events. change and improvement, not only from exercising, but from real-life events. There's a real focus in the United Kingdom, born, dare I say it, sometimes from judicial inquiries, public inquiries into past events. Has learning really been learnt? Have changes really been made across the responder community, the emergency services? And it's important that not only lessons are learnt, but something is done with those lessons, changes are made, and improvements are made. The one example I'll always give is 2017, the attacks, multiple attacks in the United Kingdom. Lawrence spoke about it earlier, a vehicle as a weapon attack on Westminster Bridge, 22nd of March. A Romanian female, Andrea Christie, was struck so violently by that vehicle on a bridge that she was pushed over the bridge into the River Thames, a fast-flowing river in the middle of the afternoon. Because of really fast and effective multi-agency debriefing, multi-agency learning, changes were made to some operational procedures, I won't go into details. And people said, should that ever happen again, are we in a better place? It did happen again, six weeks later, on a Saturday night, the 3rd of June. This time, a French national, Xavier Thomas, walking across London Bridge, was struck by a vehicle as a weapon, in this case, a van, and again, knocked into a fast-flowing river in London in the hours of darkness. That rapidity with which multi-agency debriefing happened, changes were made, was a really, really important factor. I've just been given the sign, ladies and gentlemen. I said it was going to be a quick input. Just in reflection, that is what prepare do, that is what National Counterterrorism Exercising Team do. Thank you very much for your attention. As Jonathan alluded to, formerly I served for three and a half decades in fire and rescue. And I know there's an event this evening at 6pm, but not to forget, today is the anniversary of those awful events of 9/11, and pay tribute to all the victims. But on a personal note, and for firefighters the world over, 343 colleagues were killed that day, firefighter colleagues in the towers, something I think we should never forget, and a tribute to them. I think the fact that we've put so much effort in, multi-agency to preparedness, is a really, really important factor. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Ellis, as usual, you're an officer and a gentleman. Now, I would like to welcome to the dais Mr Andy Harding, Strategic Manager, Less Lethal Weapons and Counterdrones, National Police Chief's Council of the UK. Andy is a retired London Metropolitan Police Inspector, recently appointed as the UK National Police Chief's Council Strategic Manager for Less Lethal Weapons and Counterdrones. After the 2018 drone incursion at Gatwick Airport, he led a team to counter drone threats. He has lectured around the world, and his extensive experience in challenging policing roles, including the Territorial Support Group and Intelligence Services. He served as a Public Order Advisor and was part of the Command Team for a high-profile incidence from the late 1990s until his retirement in 2021. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I think I did have some slides up.
Hello, from Washington, and thank you.
Perfect. Wow. That wasn't me throwing my voice, that was something else. Yeah, brilliant, right. Right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm delighted to be here, and deeply honoured to be able to speak to such a wide-ranging audience here today, and to talk to you about how we are dealing with the drone threat in the UK. I'm actually here on behalf of my boss, who's Chief Constable Lucy Dorsey, who's sorry she can't be here in person. I think I've definitely come out on top by being here in this beautiful country, whilst Lucy tends to urgent business back in this sweltering heat, 30-degree heat over in London at the moment. We're not used to it over there, you see. So I hope that obviously I can cover as much as possible over the next seven minutes. So I've been given seven minutes to discuss four years of hard work, so buckle up, it's going to be a bit of a whistle-stop tour of what we've done. As you've heard, my name's Andy Harding. I was a police officer in the Met Police, serving 31 years in a variety of roles. Training was something that was an integral part of my career story. And in 2007, I was asked to roll Taser out in London, and I thought it would be pretty easy to do, but I was really surprised at the pushback that we had from the public and other organisations as well. And over the next 11 years, working in that sort of environment, it really did make me believe that sometimes the world can be a very upside-down place. And obviously, that links in nicely with what happened in 2018 in Gatwick Airport. As you all know, it was shut down by drones flying around the runway. The multiple sightings and subsequent damage to the critical national infrastructure garnered international attention. Our second-largest airport was under attack, or so we thought. Christmas holidaymakers' plans lay in ruins, and the police were left bewildered at what had happened. The military supported the operation, but after a few days of ad hoc sightings, and the military and the police trying to pinpoint the source of the problem, eventually, the drones just faded away and were never seen again. I, probably much like most people in this room, watched this unfold on television, on the news. And at this point, I was nothing to do with drones, but it wasn't lost on me the scale of the problem and the economic damage this had done to the UK. The incident cost Gatwick Airport 1.4 million pounds. The cost to airlines ran into tens of millions, and subsequent security reviews and purchase of equipment at Gatwick Airport has run into an estimated £4 million. So in short, a couple of drones, just two drones, had cost millions and millions of pounds. A thousand flights disrupted and 140,000 passengers affected. So there was, for us, the issue to actually get our teeth into and see whether we could deal with it. So I was asked to review the police position in the run-up to the incident. I did so, quickly became aware that we were lacking in many areas, including structure, strategy, gaps in our capability, operational requirements that led to equipment and preparedness. It was at this point I was asked to take over the counterdrones work, which was a formidable task. However, I wasn't far off retirement, so I thought I'd give it a go, and in any case, I could retire in January 2020. As you can see, I'm still here. So what did I do? So my priorities were to review what we had across the UK, build a team, and understand the scale of the problem. There are 43 police forces in the UK under the Home Office and six forces who sit elsewhere. So I established that there were some forces that had a counterdrone programme, others who were still trying to move away from Windows 98. My first job was to stop the working in silos mentality. And I know that this is something that a number of people have already mentioned to date at this conference. So we needed to introduce a national and regional network of collaboration. In short, stop people going off in different directions and elicit the support of every force in the UK. So my first point to make at this conference, we need to smash those silos and get everyone working to the same strategy. We achieved a national working group immediately and tasked them to put together regional teams and to supply us with intelligence and information. My next and most urgent task was to lay a foundation of equipment, the detected, track-and-identified drones, and a network of affecters to be able to deal with the threat. And this is where it got really interesting. Industry, which was just warming up to the threat, had a variety of ideas and solutions and eye-watering price tags to deal with the problem. To give you a very small case study, one credible company wanted to charge £100,000 per piece of kit. I needed national coverage, and £100,000 per piece of kit was not going to give me national coverage. So it troubled me to think that I wouldn't be able to get the coverage that I wanted. So I sent my team on a global hunt for kits that would do the same thing, and they delivered. We found a manufacturer in Europe that would supply a similar kit for £30,000, saving me over £70,000 on each purchase. So my next point, we need to build relationships with industry, and we should be realistic with the cost of what this equipment is going to be. It's the taxpayers' money, after all, and that's something that we do really need to keep in mind. I then needed to establish a very close relationship with the government. A counterdrone department had been in place, but our growth and reporting prompted a new and improved government approach, which I have an excellent relationship with today. We are a strong cross-government community bound by a very in-depth strategy. And that's my point number three for you today, is push for money and a close relationship with the government. It is absolutely essential for us to keep ahead of the game. My next task was to work out the problem and where our threat and risk sat. I employed a fantastic analyst who tapped into our regional networks. The story that was emerging was staggering, and things were revealed which changed our direction of travel. We just weren't seeing an immediate or imminent terrorist threat at that stage. Don't get me wrong, I understand we have to be prepared for such an eventuality, but our immediate threat and risk came from serious and organised crime, such as prisons and drugs being flown in. We had public events such as festivals, airports, and would you believe, paedophiles who were using drones to spy on schools, and the public not understanding the rules of engagement when flying drones. So my point four is don't just focus always on CT. Our strategy, our strategy looks at CT, serious and organised crime, public order, and conventional policing. And if you deal with the lower threats and risks, then you will by default create a hostile environment for terrorists to operate in, and by default, you will counter-terrorism. So finally, what's in store for the future? Well, firstly, I've already mentioned the silos. We need to break down the international barriers to engagement. The silos need to be controlled, and collaboration needs to take precedence. We've got a reasonably good network out there, but it could be better, and it's something that we are striving to try and achieve. Second, we see on the international stage, and in particular, the war on Ukraine, that hostile states and drones are a cheap, yet lethal capability. It doesn't surprise me that in a 10-kilometre-square area in Ukraine, there are 600 drones operating all at the same time. That is something that's staggering, but it's something that is real. Third, our testing of equipment and relationships with industry needs to be enhanced. We have to be assertive and control the narrative. Fourth, we need to be alive to the threat. There is a tendency to get bogged down with radio frequencies, or RF, when we know the future will bypass conventional drone equipment with the development of beyond-visual line-of-sight 5 and 6G waypoints and built-in defence mechanisms that drone manufacturers are introducing to make them safer to fly, but unwittingly, they are handing criminals a golden opportunity to thwart our efforts. This is evidenced now, and we are in danger of falling behind if we don't invest and keep up. Fifth, networking all our equipment to enable a fusion of the systems. It is bizarre, isn't it, that we have police, airports, critical national infrastructure, prisons, and other organisations, all with their own kit and equipment? And it's only now that we're actually connecting it all up. But I want to go one step further, and I want to be ahead and ensure that architecture enables us to fuse the information at a command and control level and beyond level, giving us the clearest picture of all as we plan for the next five years. And just last note from me, just a plea from me as well. Sometimes we are receiving top-secret intelligence briefings. Sometimes they're top-secret because of one or two words or sentences within, yet my analysts can find open-source information which is just as comprehensive as the top-secret stuff. So we need to ensure that we aren't already alienating our staff in a misguided approach to top-secret. So my message is, dare to share. And that's something that is supported by Lucy Dorsey, who uses that phrase a lot. So I'm going to leave you on that note, ladies and gentlemen. Let's dare to share. Thank you very much indeed.